Good evening and welcome to the School Board Meeting for District 196. It is March 14th, and this is our regular School Board Meeting. It is 6:00 PM and we are at Dakota Ridge School. As we get into the meeting this evening, would you rise and join us with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome this evening. Board, before you as the agenda, there are no additions or deletions, so the agenda is as outlined. And with that, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sutchen, a second by Art. All in favor of the motion or the agenda approval saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote. Corey and Sakowden are not available this evening, so we will miss them and we will move on. First of all, this evening, we've got recognitions by the School Board. Our first recognition this evening, we couldn't be more proud to introduce the Magnet Schools of America Schools of Excellence and Distinction Award, Glacier Hills Elementary School of Arts and Science. Sally Saliday is going to introduce our people from Glacier Hills and congratulations.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger. It's my pleasure to be here tonight to recognize Glacier Hills Elementary School of Arts and Science in Eagan, who was selected a School of Excellence in Magnet Schools of America's 2022 Merit Awards Program. Joining me tonight, Principal Adriana Henderson and Assistant Administrator Alyssa Bartosz, who's also the Magnet TOSA for Glacier Hills. And they are here representing the staff, the students, and the families of that great school. Magnet Schools of America advocates for high-quality instructional programs that promote choice, equity, diversity, and academic excellence for all students. The School of Excellent Award earned by Glacier Hills is given to a select group of Magnet Schools that have demonstrated the highest level of excellence in all facets of the Merit Award application. Glacier Hills has been granted this award previously and is one of only three schools in Minnesota and 132 in the nation to be selected this year. The Merit Awards of Excellence and Distinction recognize Magnet Schools that show a commitment to high academic standards, curriculum innovation, successful desegregation and diversity efforts, specialized teaching staff, and parent and community involvement. Please join me in congratulating Principal Henderson and Assistant Administrator Bartosz and the Glacier Hills community of staff, students, and family on receiving this prestigious award.
On behalf of the staff, students, and families of Glacier Hills, we really congratulate you. It takes everybody to build that village, so congratulations to all of you. Next, we'll move on to Superintendent recognitions of students and staff. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Thank you. Hold on, because we have a lot to celebrate tonight. We'll start with some students and then we'll end up celebrating some of our staff. So I'll start with congratulations to the Eastview High School Dance Team on winning both the Jazz and High Kick State Championships in Class 3A for the third year in a row. This is the first time any Minnesota school has accomplished this. I look forward to officially recognizing the team at our next regular Board Meeting on April 11th. Congratulations to Eagan High School senior Jackson Keeler and Rosemont High School freshman Lucas Gerton on winning championships at the Boys State Swimming and Diving Tournament earlier this month. Jackson took first place in the 100-yard butterfly and second place in the 200-yard freestyle, and Lucas won the 1-meter diving state title. Evan Kinseth of Rosemont also took second place in the 500-yard freestyle at the state tournament. We will officially recognize these three student athletes at our April 11th meeting. Congratulations to South Morris Grace Alagbo of Apple Valley High School and Riley Myers of Eastview High School on winning state championships in the first-ever Minnesota State High School League Girls Wrestling Tournament earlier this month. These incredible students will also be recognized at our next meeting. Congratulations to the District 196 ISAT Figure Skating Team on placing third in the Ice Sports Industry Winter Classic National Competition in San Jose, California in February. The ISATs also performed their 46th Annual Ice Show, Planes, Trains, and Automobiles in March at the Apple Valley Sports Arena. Congratulations to the 12 District 196 Middle School students who were named to the Minnesota Band Directors Association's Middle Level Honor Band and the eight high school students named to the 910 Honor Band. Congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Basketball Team on winning their section title and once again securing a spot in the state tournament. Their first game is Wednesday at Williams Arena, and we wish you luck at state. Congratulations to the Dakota Hawks adapted floor hockey teams, who are both participating in this week's state tournament. Both the CI and PI teams play their first match Friday evening. Good luck Hawks. And now, I have two groups of employees to celebrate. So I would like to recognize our school's social workers for the important work they do with students and families in our schools. National School Social Worker Week was celebrated earlier this month and highlighted the impact school's social workers have helping students overcome issues that can interfere with their learning. This year's theme was "Time to Shine." Our school's social workers help students shine by emphasizing the whole child collaborating with other professionals, supporting individual student needs, and linking students and families with services. Thank you to our school's social workers. At this time, I would like to ask any social workers who are with us this evening to stand and be recognized.
We'll recognize them from my part.
And finally, later this evening, the Board will be asked to approve resolutions designating this week as Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week in District 196. Our cultural family advocates serve as a bridge between school and culturally diverse students and families. They foster academic and social growth, and they provide support for staff on how to meet the unique needs of our students and families. At this time, I would like to ask our cultural family advocates to stand and be recognized.
Thank you so much for joining us this evening. Next on the agenda is a special communication request. People who would like to speak during our special communication request must submit a form at least five days in advance of our meetings. Ten speakers will receive up to at least four minutes each to share their comments. If there are more than ten requests, a lottery is conducted to determine those ten speakers. Speakers may not allow their time to anyone else, and we use a timer for public comment and will remind speakers when they have 30 seconds left. We expect speakers to finish their remarks when their time expires. Speakers are also reminded not to share complaints about specific employees or make inappropriate comments. Opinions shared during the public portion of the comment of the meeting do not necessarily represent the views of the School Board or the district or maybe anybody else in the audience. The audience is expected to be calm, civil, and not disrupt speakers from being heard. Speakers, when you come to the podium, could you please state your name and your connection to the school district? With that, our first speaker tonight is Richard Waldy.
My name is Rich Waldy. I'm a longtime resident of the school district, and I've been employed as a substitute guest teacher in the district for over 20 years. I feel that I'm worthy and well-qualified and duly and truly prepared to speak about something this evening. I would like to discuss civility. Before I do that, I'd like to put in perspective the fact that we have one of the best school districts in the state of Minnesota. We are blessed with good parents, good students, good staff, a good School Board, good administration, and we are free from financial strife and/or other problems that other school districts may have. Civility addresses how we respect each other and how we should be treated. All persons should be treated with respect as well as our institutions. Civil discourse is a desirable skill. We should also have unity, equality, and temperance. I have noted that in our past School Board Meetings, people have not been civil or behaved properly. When a person is rude and not polite, they're setting a bad example for their family, their children. Children are taught by their parents, even more so than the teachers in this building. I have seen students, sometimes very seldom, be rude to other students and staff based on information that they incorrectly obtain outside of school. I understand that this forum is very charged. When my daughter was in high school, her boundary was changed from Apple Valley to Rosemont to Eastview during her career. Our family dealt with it in a civil manner. At Rosemont Middle School, Mr. Walseth teaches Global Studies. He presents facts in a clear and fair manner, and that's all I'd like you to do with the facts that I have given you this evening. And I'll leave you with this comment. Let peace and harmony prevail, which is the strength of most societies and institutions, especially of ours. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Our next speaker is David Bester.
Hello. I'm David Bester, resident of the district here, and thank you, Superintendent and Board members. I just want to make a short talk about deception. The thing about being deceived is that you don't realize it's a deception, and so you respond in ignorance. Sometimes we're deceived by following and trusting someone else who is also deceived and ignorant. Sometimes we're blinded by pride, or greed, or fear, or even laziness, or entitlement, and then lured into a deception and ultimately trapped. Sometimes a crisis produces fear, and people can take advantage or even create the crisis in the first place. Rahm Emanuel, former Chicago mayor and advisor to Bill Clinton, chief of staff to Barack Obama, and currently ambassador to Japan, appointed by Joe Biden, was quoted as saying, "You never let a serious crisis go to waste." And what I mean by that, it's an opportunity to do things you couldn't do before. Our experience is a... our crowd... excuse me, our country has experienced a crisis, and we are seeing things done that we thought would never happen. Maybe we're being played. The deception, given the right circumstances, can seem to take on a life of its own, and people will believe and do irrational things. There is clearly an influence beyond our five senses that can convince people to believe absurd things, even though evidence to the contrary is available, abundant, and even Evidence that God created the heavens and the earth is all around us, yet you refuse to acknowledge Him. Some of you encourage racial division through your teaching of CRT, or whatever you're calling it these days. Some of you encourage boys to be girls and girls to be boys, depending on not how and how they were created, but how they feel at the moment. There was clear evidence that masks and vaccines are ineffective at best and likely harmful, yet we required both until it was no longer fashionable. You support a system that believes the traditional God-designed nuclear family is a thing of the past, and parents who love their children are to be resisted and ignored. We need a School Board that represents parents and children that love and the children they love, and not the decrees of godless bureaucrats in government or the teachers' union officials, no matter how much money they offer you or the district. You have the ability and the authority to do what is right for the people you represent. The Bible says in the Book of Matthew, "Woe to those who cause these little ones to stumble and lose their faith in sin. It would be better for them to have a millstone tied around their neck and hurled into the sea." As unattractive as that sounds, that would be a better option if you could choose. The good news is that God loves us, no matter what we have done, and that He sent His only Son, Jesus, to set us free, and if we choose to accept Him, you can be set free. It's not too late. Further good news is that Jesus gave us His church the keys to the kingdom realm, Heaven's Kingdom realm, and to forbid on earth what is forbidden in heaven, and to release on earth what is released in heaven. Take heart, Christians, and stand with God. Let your light shine. Speak out. Our fight is not against man, but against the deceptive fantasies and arrogant attitudes that are in defiance of God. Therefore, spirit of fear and deception, I declare you silenced and forbidden here. And I invite you, Holy Spirit of God, of love, power, peace, and a sound mind, to be released here to those who receive in the name of Jesus. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Vernon Vi.
My name is Vernon Vi. I have three kids in District 196. Over the past several months, tension has developed between this Board and an increasing number of parents. Parents who are frustrated that their concerns are being ignored and disregarded and shocked by the disrespect they're being shown by a few of the Board members. I've heard calls for greater civility. This needs to be a two-way street. Public servants are expected to hold themselves and each other to high standards, higher than the passive-aggressive contempt and dishonesty we've seen lately. A few examples from the last regular meeting. One Board member flunted a shirt that read, "Public Health Saves Lives," apparently intended to taunt those opposed to the mandates. That same member childishly rested their chin on an extended middle finger, which was pointed at a group of frustrated parents. We've got the photos. Another Board member thought he could de-escalate the situation by telling the audience that the mask mandate would be discussed once the normal agenda was completed. That was dishonest, as no discussion took place that evening. If any of you were sincere about discussing this issue, it would have been added to the agenda of the special meeting which took place Thursday of that same week. These tensions have been growing for over a year. In fact, it seems this Board has gone out of its way to stack the speaking slots with those it wants to hear from rather than those it needs to hear from. A Minnesota Data Practices request uncovered an email between the Superintendent and a Board member working together to draft thank-you notes to the teachers' union leaders for showing up to Board Meetings to support them. And by the way, today I took a peek at the teachers' union contributions to the School Board candidates elected in 2021. Man, a cool $28K they spent to get you guys elected, but that's none of my business. These are just a few instances of the unprofessional conduct of the public servants who swore an oath to represent the community and the public in governance of our schools. There's an expectation that the public remains civil. No argument here, but how do you remain civil towards elected officials who ignore correspondence, disregard facts that don't support their biases, and work to silence opinions that don't align with their own? Civility implies mutual respect, open minds, and honest interactions, doesn't it? Where's the civility from this School Board? The School Boards in Minnesota have a very unique power. They are one of the few public bodies allowed to govern themselves with very little oversight written in statute. Therefore, when the Board acts poorly or in their own political interests, there is very little recourse for the public outside of elections. But as sitting Board members, I'm sure you already know that. Do better. Advocate for our students. Do what's right, not just what's easy. Hold yourselves accountable for the actions of the Board and the Superintendent rather than being blaming frustrated community members and parents. We all have different ideas and different priorities, but we all have the same responsibility to work together to find solutions to our problems. None of you has all the answers. None of you is more expert than any of us. Assuming otherwise reflects arrogance, that arrogance under...
Thank you. Thank you. Our next speakers are Sidney Hoopa, Erin Kennedy, and Lauren Rockford.
Good evening. Hello, Madam Chair, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the Board. Thank you for taking time to listen to us this evening. My name is Sidney Hoopa. I'm a senior at the School of Environmental Studies. I'm joined with Erin Kenny, a senior at Eastview High School, and Lauren Rockford, a senior at Eagan High School. For those of you unfamiliar with the ISAT's District 196 Figure Skating Team, we represent all district high schools and middle schools and compete in synchronized team skating, team compulsory, individualized events, as well as a whole-team production event. The team was started in 1976 and routinely consists of between 35 to 45 skaters, and we compete at the varsity and junior varsity levels. The District 196 ISATs are perhaps the only team like it in the nation. We begin our season in November each year and compete against private skating clubs that are based out of arenas and participate in skating year-round. This year, we continued our competitive success by winning multiple events at Frosty Blades, a regional competition here in Minnesota, and the ISI Winter Classic National Competition in California. Due to COVID restrictions, we had a limited team for nationals, yet the ISATs were still able to place third overall. We routinely place in the top five at this national competition. Our season culminates in March with our ice show. Our team gets to display our talent and creativity for our local community. Our teams in small groups perform competition routines, and seniors are showcased with a solo opportunity. Young skaters in the Apple Valley Learn to Skate program start their skating journey with us, and we welcome ISAT alumni for a reunion number. The ISAT's experience is truly special because we have members from all five district high schools and feeder middle schools. But when we practice and compete, however, we are no longer intra-district rivals, but one team, the District 196 ISATs. Something I'll take away with me from the ISATs is the pride of being a part of something bigger than myself and being able to not only represent my school, but the skating community. Because the opportunity that I have had with the ISATs through District 196 is very unique and not one that many skaters in different school districts get to experience.
One thing I love about ISATs is how it lets people express themselves and be creative since figure skating is a very artistic sport. ISATs is very accepting and supportive, so everyone feels comfortable to be themselves and build confidence.
And one thing I'm appreciative of of this team is that we get to skate with skaters from all different levels and different age groups, and I've really loved the opportunity to be a captain this year and have a leadership role on the team. I am really proud of the impression that I made on younger skaters that older skaters in the past made on me, so I'm really grateful for that experience. And tonight, as captains, on the behalf of our entire team, we just wanted to thank the Board for supporting our incredible team.
Nicely done. If you have not gone and seen their shows, their shows are incredible, and it is. You are right. It is that collegial working together from all of the schools and being District 196. And as they said, this is not a normal club that is in most any other schools in the state. So congratulations and thank you so much for coming. Have a great... We move on to the rest of our agenda this evening, and we move on to the items of the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda, we have the minutes from the February 14th, 2020 Special School Board Meeting. We have the minutes from the February 14th, 2020, or 2022 Regular School Board Meeting. We have the minutes of the February 17th, 2022 Special School Board Meeting. We have the minutes from the March 1st, 2022 Special School Board Meeting. We have gifts. We have quarterly gifts. We have grants. We have advertising. We have the Treasurers Report for January 2022. We have Summary of Claims for January 2022. We have Schedule of Investments for January 2022. We have Revenue and Expenditure Report for January 2022. We have procurement... procurement? I know that word. Card services, procurement card services. We have personnel. We have employee agreement. We have an employee agreement probationary. We have the 2022/23 carpet and other flooring replacements, and we have sale of obsolete iPads and laptops. Seeing... Is there any items on the consent agenda tonight people would like to pull or have questions about? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as outlined.
So moved.
I have a motion by Joel and a second by Bianca. Any other questions? We've got a motion and a second to approve the items of the consent agenda this evening. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote. We have no items of report this evening. We have one item of old business, and we'll call up Jill Coyle, and Jill will go through Policy 502, Student Transfers.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, School Board members, and Superintendent Krieger. I am before you tonight with old business to take a look at our student transfer policy. That's Policy 502. To give you context, what we're asking you to do tonight is to look at proposed changes that will conform our policy to an action you took back in December, creating some new intra-district transfer options. So to take you back to December 13th of 2021, that is the date that the School Board approved attendance area adjustments. The approved adjustments contemplated a phased implementation process, which included certain specific intra-district transfer options for affected students. In response to the new attendance area adjustments, the administration made corresponding revisions to the student transfer regulation and procedures. Tonight's policy is much more general, not as specific as those procedures and regulations, but it is nevertheless necessary to pull our policy into compliance with the Board action on December 13th. So to itemize the specific revisions that you have before you tonight in Policy 502, first you will see that Paragraph 3.6.1 was revised and Paragraph 3.6.3 was added to reflect the additional transportation eligibility provided to certain transfer students affected by the December 13th, 2021 Attendance Area Adjustments. In general, intra-districts transfer students will need to find their own transportation, but we created some transportation options for students affected by the December change. In addition, Paragraph 4.7 was added as an additional transfer option to the section of the policy that details the various forms of transfer options. Finally, a reference to the December 13th, 2021 Board Action is included in the References section of the policy there at the bottom. So tonight, this is an action item for you. I am happy to take any questions that you have. Otherwise, it is before you for approval. Thank you.
This is national... so the board is going to have... Motion and a second? Okay, we have a motion by Sutchen and a second by Art. Are there questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? We've talked about this before, and obviously it went with our boundary changes. So seeing no questions, we have a motion and a second to approve our old business item, Policy 502, Student Transfers. item, Policy 502, Student Transfers. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you. We have no new business this evening. We have other action items. We'll call up Tom Peterstun, and Tom will go through the employee group health insurance. Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Chairperson Magnuson, members of the board, and Superintendent Krieger. I bring before you tonight an exhibit on employee group health insurance. The district has had a self-funded arrangement for our employee health insurance plan with health partners, providing stop-loss coverages and administrative services since July first, 2012. In the ten years since that time, our premium increases have averaged 2.2% each year. We are projecting to have built a reserve of almost twenty-two, a little over twenty-two million by the end of this plan year, after accounting for claims runout. State law requires us to request proposals every two years, and we went through that process over the past few months, including a review of the district's insurance committee, which is comprised of representatives from the various employee groups. I'm pleased to report that after reviewing the proposals, the insurance committee unanimously recommends that we continue with health partners, providing the administrative services and stop-loss coverages for our plan over the next two years. The district insurance committee also recommended that we set the premium increase at 5% for the 2022/23 plan year. This increase will continue to protect the plan's fiscal integrity. The administration agrees with this recommendation and asks that you approve this exhibit. I've just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
Great. This is an action item this evening, so before we go into questions, I'll ask for a motion and a second. Motion by Joel, and I will second it. Second by Jackie. With that, are there any questions or comments about this item from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I will just say, wow. Because after, I mean, this has been ten years now of doing this self-funding. Before we did that, we were looking at increases of thirteen percent, eighteen percent, I mean, just incredible increases. So this has really kept the costs of our insurance, our insurance-administered plans under control, fairly cost, and great benefits for our employees and, and cost-effective for them and for the district as well. So I would really like to thank you and the people that you work with, and all the people that are in that insurance committee, because it's, it takes a little bit to go through, and, and you're going to do requests for proposals and go through all that. So thank you so much, because this is a real benefit for our district and our employees.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? We have a motion and a second to approve the employee group health insurance plan as outlined. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote. Thank you. Thank you. Our next item this evening, under other action items, is our Cultural Family Advocates Employee Appreciation Week for March fourteenth through the eighteenth. We'll turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Thank you. Tonight, I ask your approval of the resolution declaring District 196 Cultural Family Advocate Employee Appreciation Week, March fourteenth through March eighteenth, 2022.
Before we move into discussion, I'll ask for a motion and a second.
Motion approval, second?
Motion by Art, a second by Sutchen. Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Sutchen?
I'll just make a quick comment on what a wonderful program this is. It has served us really, really well by making those connections into many of the marginalized communities that we work with, and I've had a chance to get to know most of our cultural family advocates, if not all of them, and we're just really blessed to have the caliber of folks within those roles that we do. So wonderful program, and I'm really happy that we have that in our, in our district.
Here, here. Agreed. Seeing no other comments, we have a motion and a second to approve the Family Cultural Advocate Employee Appreciation Week, March fourteenth through the eighteenth. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote. We've come to the school board member and superintendent. Updates board members with items that you'd like to update us on tonight. Go ahead, Sutchen.
This past weekend, we got a chance to see the wonderful performance at Apple Valley High School. And many of us were there in attendance, and it was wonderful to see the great enrichment, vibrancy of our school represented in that, in that moment. It was great to see participation from the community, and it's great that we're making those convergence back into fully engaged partnership throughout the entire district. So if you get a chance in the future to see a place at one of our wonderful high schools or middle schools for that matter, you will not be disappointed. I'll personally vouch for that, so.
Any other comments? Talk about AAA philosophy. You've got arts, athletics, and academics. I'm going to make sure I got them all. And what we have just had a showcase here this, in the past couple of weeks in District 196. We've got DECA kids doing amazing things. We've got band concerts. We've got concert at Apple, or the play at Apple Valley High School was wonderful. We've got kids performing at state levels all over the place. Go see the Dakota Hawks, because you will just love it. They are just great. And Apple, or the Rosemont High School basketball teams, and all of our teams, all of our kids that have, have competed and are getting ready to compete. It's because of the families and because of students and because of staff that we can, we can offer these things for our students, and we're really proud. With that, we'll turn it over to the superintendent for updates.
Just a couple quick updates. On March eighth and ninth, members of our legislative and budget advisory councils and I met with our local legislators to share our legislative priorities and discuss the needs of the district. We value the partnership we have with our local legislators and are thankful for their support. We're especially grateful for their time during this busy legislative session. So thank you to all of our legislators in District 196. And finally, a reminder, next week is spring break. There will be no school, March twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, and our buildings will be closed. I hope everyone finds an opportunity to rest and recharge and come back excited to finish the school year.
Exactly. We have come to the end of our agenda this evening. I'll ask for a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion by Joel.
Second.
And a second by Sutchen. We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. That passes on a five-zero vote, and we are adjourned. Thank you.